We have two items on the agenda for tonight's meeting. One is an ordinance that would be a change order and one would be a motion. If council was so inclined, we would read those as one reading and by time only. Is that fine with everybody?
Yes.
Okay. That being the case, we officially call meeting to orders. Stay at your place.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call room, please.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Mr. Tisch?
Here. Okay, we have a quorum. We have all received minutes of the meeting. Are there any additions or corrections from any member of council? If not, then the meetings, the minutes would stand approved as presented. Reading communications. Mr. Dragish, you have anything?
Nothing.
Mr. Morve?
Yeah, I just wanted to question Joe about that dip in the road that we talked about the last meeting. Did you?
Yeah, what I suspect is happening there, if you recall, when they were doing the project, there were a couple of areas that were failing, and that was one of the areas that our guys had addressed. Now, it looks like it may be an extension of the area that was filled that may be getting saturated. What was happening, water was collecting in there. We dug down about two foot and filled it in with granular material. It might be seeping out of that and creating another soft spot right where our repair ended. So, I would suggest monitoring it through the winter and then we can address it in the springtime, just to see what happens to it. You could see the crack line and kind of form around where they had carved out that undercut.
Anything else, Mr. Morve?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Mayor Cosar?
Nothing.
Okay. Mr. Morve?
Yes, a couple pieces of correspondence. The city did receive its check from our Lisi at the Red Gate Farm for the 2013-14 crop year. However, there was an issue with the utility easement that ran through there. He was making a claim for about seven acres that were disturbed during that easement, and I got ahold of Sunoco, who was the operator of the easement, and they are settling with him directly, so we wouldn't have to be involved. So, we received our full payment for that project. I also got an announcement from ODOT with reference to a scheduled pre-construction meeting for the US 224 Bridges Over 11 Project. That meeting will be held at the Akron offices of ODOT on Monday, November 10th at 10:00 a.m. I plan on attending that to get a schedule and to see what further involvement the city may have with that particular project. And lastly, I received a letter from one of our water customers requesting a waiver of the penalty. And in this particular instance, the writer is the executor of her mother's estate, who was her mom's house that had the late fee. She claimed that she had passed away in August, and her bank accounts were frozen. She had finally gotten access to her accounts, and at that time, the water bill became late. She's asking for a waiver of just the penalties on that. And again, council has the only authority to do that.
What was the amount?
The residence was Blair, B-A-I-R.
The amount?
Floyd Gennevy.
No, the amount.
Oh, the amount? I don't, I'm assuming it's like a $5, $6 late fee. It's not a major amount, just a normal water bill.
We would need legislation if we wanted to do that, correct?
No. I think we've taken a roll.
Yeah, we've done that. Just a roll call. But resolutions, fine, too, or a motion. In fact, when you take roll call on that issue, that's a motion.
Yeah, I mean, it's under $10, and it was that situation. I don't have a problem with that. I would waive the fees. I would waive the late fees myself, and I'll make the motion that we do so, provided it's less than $10, that we would waive the fees.
I'll second that.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes. Anything else, Mr. Morve?
That's all I have on the correspondence.
Okay. Terry Fortunato? No correspondence. No correspondence. Reports of committees, boards, and city manager. Any of the members of council have reported? Any of the boards?
I just would like to thank citizens of Cantfield for voting for the fire district levy, and that has passed, and so we're now going to be able to equip the new station with the personnel and the training and the equipment that's needed out there, and they'll maintain our ISO levels and/or reduce them with this new station. So, just want to personally thank the citizens of Cantfield for that support. If you have not seen the news today, one of our fire trucks was called to duty on the turnpike, and someone not paying attention slammed into the back of the fire truck. A fire, there was a fire that ensued with a car that was there. I believe a young lady was fatally injured, killed, and we had three firemen that sustained some injuries, but I understand that they have been released. And so, we wish everyone the best and keep everyone in our prayers for that situation. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Morve. I had just one comment. This last weekend, I had a couple of individuals come up to me and make comments about raking of leaves. And apparently, there have been some issues with people raking leaves into watercourses and into storm sewers, causing them to back up and causing some problems for people within the neighborhood. I don't know, do you get any complaints like that or not?
Todd responded, and I believe two of them that were brought to our attention, that were within easements, and our guys were able to go in there and flush that out. And again, that's something that we need to make the public aware of, that that's not the proper placement of leaves.
These were in the, I think it's in the easement between Sleepy Hall and the Gray Hall.
That's one of them. That was one of them.
Okay. And you've gotten the same one, okay. Okay, we'll now go down to recognition of persons desiring to appear before council.
Chuck, before you do that, I have the court report.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm here.
For the month of October, we had gross collections of $11,743.62 after we made the distribution to the various council required to by law. We had net collections of $9,290.12. It's a pretty big month. For the month of October, we had 390 traffic stops. We had 343 verbal or written warnings, or 87.9% written or verbal warnings. That's what, just about one out of eight got a citation after having been stopped for probable cause. That tells me the department is out there, very observant, making stops that should be made, and not necessarily citing everybody that we see. One out of eight, I'm pretty proud of.
Okay, now we'll go forward to recognition of persons wanting to appear before council. Oops.
A few comments I'd like to make as well.
Man, I'm just messing that up.
Yeah, and I'd like to report on the Fairview Maple Project. I know we've had quite a bit of calls on that particular project, and I've been spending a little bit of time out there during the process. And from my observation, a lot of it, I can't really blame on the contractor. We've had some, a lot of utilities out in that area, a lot of utilities that have not been recorded. A particular instance, on Hoods Drive, our water line was at a depth of 2.5 feet, which is rather shallow for a water line, and the council did address that one with a change order a couple of weeks ago. We've also had water service lines that were buried in the roadway on Fairview Avenue that actually serviced homes on Maple Avenue. We had no record of those, and they weren't marked or shown on the plan by any means. That resolved in a water break. We had a hydrant on the corner of Fairview and Maple that was called out on the plans to be adjusted or relocated. There was no room to put it where it was at, so we had asked the contractor to relocate it on another, on the opposite intersection, so it was still within the 250 or 500 feet from other hydrants. And in the case of doing that, we couldn't get the line shut off on Maple. The valve that controls Maple Avenue from Maple to Broad Street was malfunctioning, so we had to shut Fairview down in order to get a shut off on Maple. So, again, there was an inconvenience to the residents in that particular case. Earlier in the week, this week, there was a water valve that was marked, and again, the markings are 25, 30 feet into the yard where the shut off valve is. The actual line where it connected to the main was about 20 foot off of any type of a direct line. I did watch, when they were excavating, they dug down about 20, about 2 feet, and went in with a probe, located the water line, and then proceeded to dig. When they dug, they hit part of that service line, and it was as if they had an extra piece of pipe or something in it. They created like an S. So, again, you really can't blame the contractor for some of these situations. However, there was one that they did nip. It was marked, it was pretty much in a straight line, that one. They had pulled the curb stop out of the main. Our guys had to make the repair, and we will be billing them after that particular instance. You know, I can only apologize for some of the inconveniences we've had. I think three or four boil alerts out there. You know, I realize it's an inconvenience, but I hope it's worth it once this project is done and it's doing what it's intended to do. With that in mind, there's been a number of delays. You know, the project was scheduled to be completed by the end of this week. We're probably looking at another week to a week and a half before they do finish the project, and I'm hopeful that we can get that accomplished.
Joe, we had some discussion last meeting, and you weren't here, but we'd asked you to maybe follow up with the engineer as to the depth of that. You know, I mean, why wasn't that identified?
Right, and again, when we had the pre-bid and the pre-construction meeting, you know, with myself and Todd present, we made the assumption that that line was at least three foot deep, three to five feet, and this was about 2.5 foot where they encountered it. And it was right in line with the storm sewer. At the same run, there was a sanitary sewer coming out of one of the homes on Maple that also had to be, had been addressed. What they did is raise the grade of the new storm sewer with enough cover between it and the sanitary to be able to accomplish that without much detail. And again, a lot of these things aren't recorded. We had, the county is mapping all of our permits, and they have the base map of the entire city, and we provided them with all of the permits that we had scanned. There's about 800 permits that are non-existent, and Chuck, maybe you can shed some light that I was told that there was a period where the county did the inspections, and they maintained those records, and the city had attempted to get those records at one time, and they said they're available, but somebody has to come down and locate them. And I don't know if that's something to informate with.
That's true. I mean, a number of years ago, county would do the inspections, we would issue the sanitary sewer permits, they would do the inspections, they would send the permit back to us. Then they went through a period where they would do the inspections, and they kept them on file. We're now back to, they're sending, they're sending the information back to us now. But there was a time period in which they filed them away, and at one time, they said, well, we can come and get them, but apparently, they're in the attic of the courthouse and not stored in any kind of sordid manner or anything like that, so.
So, I did place a call through the board to help to see if we can pinpoint as to what needs to be done to try and retrieve those. But right now, we have about 2/3 of our permits, if you go on the county's GIS system, you can click on the property, and if there's a permit there, the permit will show up right on the GIS, and that's what we're trying to get all of them on there. But again, we were, from their count of the number of properties that are dwellings in the city, there's about 840, I think, permits missing. And we tried matching those with some of our old records and some of the files, and all of the ones that we have in-house are accounted for. It's got to be the ones that we've lost during that period.
Mr. Tisch, after the fact, had gone out with a simple measuring stick and determined how deep that pipe was, what responsibility did the engineer have prior to?
Well, again, yeah, there's, typically, you can go out, and I don't know if you measured from the valve down to the top of the valve, and you could get a depth of where it was. And, you know, that's done in most cases as well. But, you know, again, myself and Todd, when we talked to the engineer while we were in the development plan, we felt safe in saying that, you know, the water line's at least three foot deep. It ran underneath, or we assumed it ran underneath the old storm sewer, and for the most part, we were maintaining that same shelf level, and assuming, again, on my part, and as well as, you know, Todd present, that we wouldn't be interfering with the water line, it would be deeper. And that's how that kind of surfaced. When they did, when they did come across it at a perpendicular to it, they were right in line with our storm sewer. So, it was no, you know, they couldn't get enough depth to get below it, and raising it up would have hampered the amount of flow coming down. It would have decreased its efficiency. So, we had to lower the water line to keep that storm sewer at that.
Do you think we'll finish this job up in about a week or so?
That probably held them up pretty close to a week, I guess, because there were materials that had to be ordered, and there was some downtime during that. And I wasn't here, but I understand it was shut down for a period of time until they were able to get that water line relocated.
But you think we have another week and we'll be wrapping that up?
That's what I'm told by the inspectors, and we're hopeful that barring any other major problems out there, they should be able to wrap up comfortably within two weeks. I'm just thinking within a week and a half.
Off of that subject, I know you've had some discussion with Stratford Green and the lighting. Did we want to talk about that?
Yes, yeah, there's a, it's an interesting situation there. They've asked for, to be established, to establish a lighting district there, and one of the obstacles that we had to work, do some research and get an opinion, is that it was developed as a PUD. However, they were allowed to have a dedicated street through the PUD. Our regulations for a lighting district require that frontages be considered, and in a PUD, there are no frontages. So, I guess we're of the opinion that as long as the association, in a PUD, there's one owner, one frontage. If we get a certified letter from the association requesting that lighting district, then we can go ahead and assess the association based on that. So, we're going to proceed in that manner, and the process for that is, once they submit the request, a certified request, we can submit that to Ohio Edison, First Energy. They come up with a recommendation of how many lights you need, the placement of those lights, and the actual cost. We'll then hold a public hearing. The residents of Stratford Green will be invited. If they agree with the cost, then we go ahead and proceed with the lighting district. And incidentally, we've had a couple other requests, all at the same time, which is, you know, in the five years I've been here, this is the first time somebody's asked, and during the same week, we've had two other requests. So, we're looking at the same thing possibly in Kings Lake and on Birdat Lane.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Morve?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we'll go to citizens' comments. First on the list, Donna Bishop, 245 Fairview Avenue.
I live on Fairview. We're doing the construction. You know, the sewers have been near and dear to my heart for a lot of years. I've been here day after day because we needed this problem fixed. While we're getting it fixed, the thing that concerns me, we have these boil alerts. They either ring the doorbell or stick a tag on your door, and then they never, nobody ever notifies us when the water's safe. Supposedly, the water was safe last Saturday. Sunday afternoon, a caregiver for my 97-year-old neighbor across the street called me and said, Donna, the water is brown-looking. And I said, I don't know, I've been running, because I've been using bottled water for drinking, so I ran some. It was bad-looking. I put it in a glass teakettle and boiled it, and it had brown scum around it and film on the top. Now, this is not really safe for people to drink. I don't know what kind of testing the city does and how effective it is, but we have young children and elderly people on our street, and obviously, that water was not good for drinking. Now, I have to say, Monday, when they broke that water main, I've seen these water mains break over the years. I've lived here for 32 years in Cantfield, and, you know, we get a lot of water main breaks over the years. That was the tallest water main break I've ever seen. It was over the top of Smith's three-story house, and it was powerful. Now, the water main break today, it went on for like 10 minutes, and I finally called down City Hall for somebody in the office to tell me we didn't know anything about it. So, then they said, repair. So, for 15 minutes, this water was flowing. You know, we people who live in Cantfield pay pretty high water rates to watch all this water go away every day. The problem with these people, with the contractors, I have asked before, I want to know who these people are. I need information about these people. My insurance company has already come out to take pictures. I have big trees in front of my house. I have a 162-year-old house. It is totally original. I mean, I still have the original windows and doors in this house, and I don't particularly want damage down to those trees and those trees falling on my big house, on my historical home, because exact replacement people would be very expensive, because Baird would have to make the timbers for it. I'm upset, because when I was on vacation three weeks ago, a man from the company came and talked to my neighbor Jim across the street, I wasn't home, and said they were concerned about the safety of my trees. After I came home, he said that she will be home on Friday. After I come home, I have contacted these workmen. I talked to Joe. I want to talk to these people. Now, they're at the house next door to me now, and I still haven't talked to anyone except for some guy that was threatening the other day to have me arrested. I was not very happy. The problem is, you have 15 feet to do your job. It's just like you said about the water lines. You can see those pictures, and I saw them in Joe's office, of where the water lines in front of my house. Remember, this is the second sewer project I've been through, and I'm telling you, where those drawings are is not where those lines are. And I, my house, my water bill is number 21 in the city of Cantfield. So, you know, I've had city water way before a lot of other people did. And what had happened is, when they built houses across the street from me, they hooked into the line in front of my house, and they angle all off of this line in front of my house. How do I know that? Because when I moved there 32 years ago, I was the youngest person in the neighborhood, and the older men in the neighborhood showed me where all these things were, because I was the youngest. Not that anymore, but I was the youngest at the time. That's how I know where all these things are. And I, when they get to my yard, not only they're not messing with my trees and my branch, but number two, they're going to run into a can of worms, because the map doesn't show anything, it's the mess of water lines. And that upsets me, because we paid Moser and Syracuse to take and make the charts, so we knew exactly where these water lines were when the last sewer project occurred. We shouldn't be having these problems. And this is a big problem. But my insurance company wants to name the address and contact information for this company, because we just don't see anything good coming of these, the way they're digging up and as much carnage as they're doing, they seem to think they have a right to 50 feet of people's property. That's what the guy told me. I said, no, you're 15 feet from the center of the street, and I don't know how you're going to do it. I really don't know how they're going to do it in 15 feet. Otherwise, you're going to be taking my trees out. The other thing that I want to talk to you about is safety, women's safety in this community. I don't think people realize on Fairview what we've been through this summer with Fairview, Colonial Drive, Hood, with all the gas company and all these different workers. You know, it's very unnerving. I'm a widow. It's very unnerving to have strange men outside my window at any given time. I don't know why construction workers think they have a right to wander through your yard, walk under your windows, do whatever they please on your property, and they have every right to do it. The thing that concerns me is we have women in my neighborhood who are afraid, and they have loaded guns in their house with young children. Now, people, this is a safety problem. It shouldn't happen, but when you live in that kind of fear, because when you look out your window and you see some strange man looking back at you, at least the gas company, except for their landscaping people, everyone had identification. This contractor that's working, there's no identification on their trucks. They won't identify who they are, who they work for. Now, how is a woman, do any of us know, if this guy, one of those guys working there could be a registered sexual predator? How do we know? And many of us live alone. But this is a big concern of me, is how many younger mothers now have loaded guns in their houses. And living in Cantfield with the police force we have, that shouldn't have to be. But nobody from the city has come around watching anything that's been going on with all this construction nightmare. So, yeah, everybody's really fed up with these guys with the sewer project, because we've been through it. We have had so many stakes, we have had so many markings in our yards. I have so many neighbors who are so upset because their patio blocks have painted writing on that probably will never come off. If you didn't watch them like a hawk, they were, they were just doing one thing after another to damage your property. They're utility people. They don't have a right to be doing this to us. And unless we do something to protect the person, the homeowner, more and more of these young women are going to be having guns, and that really frightens me.
And if you were my wife or my mother, I would ask you to call the police. I mean, we have an excellent police department here. If you feel threatened, I mean, I would certainly call them. I mean, that's their job.
We have a situation where garage doors are getting opened in our neighborhood. I don't sleep well, so I'm usually up till like 2:00 in the morning. I've called down to PD. They come over, they look around, they never knock at the neighbor store. Now, I'm not going to a neighbor store at 1:30, 2:00 in the morning. No. They never knock at the door and tell the person, please close your garage door. They just leave it all night. I've seen, I saw a situation with the next-door neighbors. I was, I happened to fall asleep. I woke up, I was doing some chores, I went upstairs to do something. The door was closed. I came downstairs, the door was open. Unfortunately, especially attached garages, we all know this is true, so many people never lock their door between their garage and their house, and that's very scary. But when you call them, and they come out, they look around, but they don't tell, so the next day, I said, well, I called the police because your door was open. You know, they need to close that door. All this stuff with the construction going on, rarely do we ever see a cruiser in our neighborhood all summer long. You know, I know that they're spread thinner now because the community's bigger, but we never saw cruisers around to make us feel secure. It just didn't happen. Oh, I called, if my dogs are barking, I pray to, where I live is up high and it's dark. And the police are wonderful, but the police aren't going to fix this fear that people have with these men outside our windows. It has to end.
I can address the project, the construction that's going on out there that the city is sponsoring. We have a full-time inspector out there that's there from 7:00 a.m. in the morning to probably 4:00 at night.
And who is he?
A tetra tech. Name's Mike. I'm not sure of his last name, but I do have that name. He's there, and I pop in and out of there several times during the day just to see what's going on, and I've been called there on some of the breaks that we've had, and he's always been there. He's been aware of what's been going on. So, I don't know what purpose any of the guys working on our project would have being out of the right-of-way near the houses they're working.
Well, they are. They are. They just seem to have total use of your front yard.
If they're looking at your meter or something up by the house, that I can't say, but there would be no reason why our guys would be up near the house, and I can address that with him tomorrow to see whether there's any time that these guys have been out there.
They have, you know, they have been. Like I said, it's been terrible. I mean, we've had our yards marked and re-marked and marked and re-marked so many times, it's unreal this year. It has been a very difficult situation, but the bottom line is, is we just have to do something as a community. something as a community to keep these workers, any workers that's working for us, utilities that are coming into the community, to remind them, you can't be wandering in people's yards. Now, your, your, these construction people made it clear that they could do anything they wanted to in fifty foot at somebody's front yard. I, I own the original homes, I'm not fifty foot from the street, and I have big dogs. Says right on my front door, a security dog. I don't want them wandering around my house. My dogs have rights too. I have rights, and I don't want them wandering around my house. Stay out in your work area. That's all women would like, is these workers to stay out in the work area, but this frightens me. Anytime there's loaded guns around little kids, that really frightens me. My dogs have no idea how to shoot that gun, but this is a concern.
Okay, thank you, Donna. Next, Frank McKea, boards and commissions.
Good evening, I'm Frank McKea, I reside at two-twenty Glenview. Let's look at the score award of the last three elections. Campfield voters, six. City Council, zero. Welcome to the twenty-first century. Council, it's time for some serious soul searching. I hope I went out here, that the people did not understand what they were voting for. After the dust settles, I'll have a lot more to say about this. Just a few comments about the thinly veiled personal attack in the last meeting. Number one, council is not above criticism, and you're not exempt from it. The presenter attempted to justify council's position. I'm not forwarding the amendments. He did not say they violated Ohio case law. He did not mention that it took a private citizen, hiring a private law firm at his own expense, to exercise his rights to put an issue on the ballot. Perhaps the target person has a real good appreciation for what goes on here. But I would like to talk about boards and commissions tonight. According to my calculations, there are two people who will end their terms this year. One in planning and zoning, and one in parks and cemetery. My concern is, how do we replace these people? In the past, I believe the appointments come via the city manager. Why is this? He does not regularly attend any board or council meeting. I doubt if he reads the minutes. What are his qualifications to be the final judge?
That's all right, council appoints members to those commissions.
We've posted, we've posted those positions, they're on our website, and we've tried to get the word out in the past in other, anyways. They, they submit a letter along with their resume to the city manager, I present that to council, and from that, we make the decisions.
The council makes those appointments, not the city manager.
It's not the city manager's appointment.
But who, who selects the candidates to give to council?
We give them all of them, and we look at their qualifications and try and fit them into the shoe that fits best.
I, I thought I'd been to appointments, and I don't recall that happening.
No, council appoints those commissioners.
I don't recall that happening.
Yeah, okay. In the last, in the last year, we had, I forget how many openings, there were like twelve or fourteen openings, we had seventeen people employed, and there was a screening process that took place, and I think you were part of that, that witnessed that council made that recommendation in emotion.
Being part of the screening process.
It's either year-end or beginning of the year, Frank, that council meeting, they make their appointments.
Okay, but, okay, I, I don't recall that happening.
That is the case.
Now, I've heard comments, I mean, just finish what I had to say here, I've heard comments that people should be qualified for these positions. Can anyone show me a document outlining the qualifications for the planning and zoning, designing the view, parks and cemetery boards and commissions? I don't believe they exist. The bottom line is, I believe the final decision is subjective. Who knows what goes on behind closed doors and in smoke-filled rooms? The qualifications seem to be somebody we like, my neighbor, my friend, someone who belongs to the same club I belong to, or just as a special favorite. And who knows where other influences come into play? In my opinion, anyone who expresses an interest in serving should have an equal opportunity to serve. Let's open some windows and shine, and shine some light on this process. Let me suggest that candidates be made in open council meetings, which I think you're telling me happens, yes. Put the names in a hat and draw the names. A first candidate, and a second and third alternative. That's a fair way, without bias and behind-the-scenes influences. And it should not take a letter to be a candidate. A phone call or a visit to the clerk of council should be, should be, should be sufficient.
You said you wanted them qualified, now you're picking them out of a hat.
Right.
All right, just thought I misunderstood.
I said there are no qualifications.
Again, I do agree with that, but let's add something.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see more transparency in this process, so anybody has an equal opportunity to serve. It shouldn't be someone subjectively saying, these people are qualified, if they're having interest to serve.
My next question?
Sure.
If the appointment is made by the members of city council, and we are elected to make decisions on behalf of the citizens of the city of Campfield, we're not supposed to use our expertise in making those decisions?
I'm saying that everybody should have an equal opportunity to serve. If you're, if you're here playing God, as to who should serve and who should not serve, by what measure are you making that decision?
I guess the measure is saying, city council elected me to use my decision-making power to reach that decision. Yes, that's why I thought that I was elected, was to evaluate things that come before this city council and make a decision based on the information that I have available.
I, I understand what you're saying, but it still does not give everybody an equal opportunity to serve, because there are no qualifications. Anybody should have an opportunity to serve and a fair chance to serve, and the way to do it is by lottery. That's my opinion, and I appreciate you listening. Thank you for your time.
Next individual would like to speak, Mike Kavitsa, two-sixty-two Fairview.
Mike Kavitsa, two-sixty-two Fairview. I'm not aware of the security issues on Fairview, the suspicion presented, but that's beside the point. What I'm here is, I just want to put it on record, that the individuals that did the landscaping for the gas company did a very poor job. My yard is pretty much a mess, they've got big chunks, they did it in a pouring rain, and there's no way that you can do landscaping in that kind of weather.
I, I had spoken to the foreman from Columbia Gas that's doing the restoration work, and he's very much aware of that. He, all he basically did was put straw down to try and maintain some kind of coverage, but they are planning on coming back in the spring and redressing everything, because at this point, seed isn't going to take. It's going to freeze, it's going to get damaged, and they recognize that, and he didn't make me aware of that.
Okay, I just wanted to make record of it, and also, there was a, I had a plant where they tore up and they were never replaced, a little bit plant.
Okay, I got that, I don't have, if you can give me that information, I can see the debt.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Jack Saunders.
I was in here some time ago, and we went over the banner situation, and I was asked by city council to check with the company that makes these and see what they thought about it. You all have a sheet there that I received back from them some time ago, and looking it over, they based it on different size banners, how many they can put on a pole, what pole they think the pole should take, but the only thing that makes me think, and I talked to several people on council about it, other than this here, and we were talking about, they talked about a sustained wind of ninety mile an hour. Now, I mean, in, in December, I don't think we'd get a sustained wind at ninety mile an hour, and I don't think we'd get a sustained wind for any length of time other than a burst of it. As a matter of fact, I think a few people have had one, one of the poles fall over without a banner on it, and I think it was just a quick blast, and that was it. What I did prior to coming here, I took the banner, and I weighed banner and the broad est in the basin, weighs just, just under a half a pound, and that's probably be the lightest thing on the pole. Matter of fact, I think if you weigh the, the, and banners that you have, what are they, grease that you put on the poles and around the green, they probably go about the same weight, maybe even a little more, a little less, and we haven't had that problem there. But I think the slightest wind you see is going to move, it's going to float. He suggests that you can look there, that, he, he gives different sizes on the banner, what they feel it would, would take. He's basing it on, on one, one support at the top, due to the fact you won't get a sail He suggests eighteen, eighteen inches wide, and one banner on a pole, which I'd be, I'd be sufficiently happy with that too. If we had a problem with any one of them, we have plenty of insurance, as, as the attorney Mark said, he was looking for what, who's insured, and I had a letter given to people some time ago, that says, we're covered for a million dollar per incident, and I, and I had put in there that the city of Campfield was additional insured. So I think we've got covered there, and I'd like to have you look this over, and if you have any questions, I could, I'd be glad to answer them. But I think you're doing this, I'd like to see it done for major things that are happening in the community. We're looking at the cemetery fund, we could probably run a, a little thing going with advertisements, that people could put their name on things, not an ad, it's just a banner supporting it. You wouldn't put any addresses, we should make it an advertisement, advertisement, phone numbers, specials or anything like that. It's just to be a patrons thing that we put on there. I was looking at First Night, when we first started into this problem, at three hundred dollars per banner for businesses, and a hundred dollars, fifty dollars per incident. I have this one here with Jack Saunders, Jack and Dee Saunders, and that would be where we're supporting First Night. And we can, we can do our funding, and we could eliminate asking businesses for a whole lot of money, I think it'd be more of a, a community event that way. And we're looking at the library, we're going to need some money for that. I think people would like to see their name on the sign and on a banner, where they would be supporting the library and not putting it as a tax, where they're going to pay, everybody pays on to it, nobody actually gets their name on. And I think we have First Night, we've got Fourth of July, which is big community things. We put on one of the biggest Fourth of July celebrations, as Sean can tell you, and Dan, uh, Donnie, we put on there, it's the biggest, as the fireworks people said, it was the biggest fireworks we have between Chicago and New York, and I think that's something for a community our size to put that on, and it's known everywhere. Same thing with First Night, we're the only ones with eighteen hundred and three. So I think if, if we could go along with this banner, I appreciate you saying yes to it. If you have any questions, I'd like to answer them now for you.
Would there be business themes on, on those banners, Jack?
Something like John Eagle, or Nemets Grocery, or something like that. Wouldn't be putting an address, nothing, it's no difference in putting an ad in, your program ad, you put everything in there about the business, the telephone number and all, we don't want that. So if you have John Eagle, it's John Eagle, if you put Smith Trucking, that'd be Smith Trucking, that's all it's on. If they want to know anything about it, they're going to have to look it up to find out where it's at. And I think at fifty dollars a piece, I think it'd be nice to have them. I know I, I talked to two of the women in town here when I first tried it, before I got shut down, and they took two banners, one, they won one in town, one at the other, that was fifty dollars a piece, and they came up with a hundred bucks just like that. I think it's going to show that we have something going on in this town, nobody else has. I think I want to see it go, I want to see something where everybody knows, and we've got some fantastic things going on here. We've got the lighting of the green. I don't think you're going to find anybody in this area around here that's going to match it. And what has it done? It's, it gives you good notoriety here in town. But that's, this is where I'm looking at, I'm not looking at any, any money from me or nothing, and they're talking about the new library, I said, if we could turn around and put, fund up that, that way and put it out there, I'll help get the money for it, I'll go around with these people. And base it on, I'm basing it on three hundred dollars a, a shot on each side, and how many they want. They give you three thousand dollars, they get ten, ten banner sides. It's not like taking it and putting it in a program book, you look at the program book that night, you go home, you throw it away, and they're paying the same kind of money for that cost. You're going to have it upstate for a month. If you, if you need more money, you turn it on and put the campaign on twice a year or three times a year, you can make yourself a hundred, a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars on it, for two hundred banners, two hundred poles.
Jack, because that is eighteen by forty-eight, is that right? Eighteen by forty-eight?
Yeah.
I think, I think we need, you know, we need to analyze what you just gave.
Yes, certainly.
I certainly do, Anthony.
Okay.
Any questions?
Take this under consideration at this point?
Yeah.
If you have any questions, do you have?
I do, of course.
I'd appreciate it if you could do it in a short period of time, because things are getting close to us, as far as First Night and other things.
You would have these up for First Night, what, you mentioned lighting of the green, would you also do it for lighting of the green?
Well, it's kind of close now, because it's only three or four weeks away, but...
Right, I know, but is that your plan, though?
Yeah, something as a community-wide event. I don't, I don't think it's for me having a family reunion or something like that, you know what I mean?
No, but I mean, so you plan on maybe lighting of the green?
Yeah.
For First Night?
First Night, I was looking, I was looking down the road, if we have it for Veterans Day and Memorial Day, we could turn around and have the, the veterans' names, the serial, the emblem of the, of the branch of service, and, and what name was, and they put their name underneath and the years that they served. I think that would really show something nice in this. And Fourth of July, we have the fireworks, we could do that for the fireworks, things of that nature. But I think it'd be a, a nice thing where you're not going out in town and the same couple of people all the time.
When you're, when you sell these, when, when somebody pays as a patron, are they buying one year?
Just, just that one, one time we're putting up, if we're putting up for one month, that's all it's for.
So, next year, does that person have to?
Yeah, that's come up again, yes. Right, all right, thanks.
And this revenue is going to First Night?
First Night for First Night, and if it's, if it's something that the city's putting on, then it'd be the city would get it, you know what I mean? Ever liked the library, we put it up for the library, they're going to need several hundred thousand dollars. So I think if, if people go to the businesses around here, and, and like you talked at the library, it's not just Campfield, it's going out in the suburbs, Columbia and Salem and Ellsworth and so on, you know what I mean? They're coming to this library, well, if they could turn around and put their name on there, that they're, they're backing this library, we could do it several times. If we need something special for the particular library or something like that, we can run a little campaign again, put their names up.
Where would the funds be channeled to, Jack? Would, would, would you open up a separate account for these funds? Would it be a 501(c)(3)C?
Yes, 501(c)(3), right now, we are with First Night.
Okay.
And really, does the fireworks, because I know they're, they have 501(c)(3)C and so on. But this is where I think would, would really show us off, and I think nobody else is doing it. I know Youngstown, every, all these communities go through and they put their sign, their banners up on the poles, but I don't think it's just, just for showing a banner, it's not for actually helping promote any particular cause in that community.
Yeah.
And I think once they see it, I think they're going to, they're going to appreciate what we're doing.
So what we're talking about at 501(c)(3)C is, is an, is an account that's set up to collect funds that people can contribute to and can actually take a donation, because the funds in 501(c)(3)C go to some charitable cause, and so that's what allows that. So by donating and getting a sign, you would be able to, it'd be a tax deduction.
Is anybody here, tonight here, have any questions that they'd like to ask? I'd be glad to answer them. I'd be glad to answer them. Pros or cons, you can tell me yes or no, I'm happy with both sides. Although I don't listen to no, but I mean, you have a chance to say that.
Okay. Thank you, Jack, thank you very much. Yeah, come on.
What I want to say is.
We need you to go to podium, stay with the podium.
Yeah. You're not on my time now.
Chick 'em.
Yeah. Yeah, one of the, 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 all I want to say is, nobody's thought of using banners as a, as a sponsorship. You see Youngstown State University, and I go to a lot of towns, we've traveled all over, they have, also, I've seen like football uniforms with the numbers, volleyballs with numbers, and I get a nice feeling when I go to that town and I see, well, that town is supporting their team, that town is supporting their school, you know, and I think maybe this will catch on. You know, people never thought of using, you know, phones in their hand, in their pocket, you know, it's always attached, but it has to start somewhere, maybe we could be the first ones. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving right along, under the legislative portion of the meeting, under old business, we have a nun.